And this will be conducted by our finance director, Ms. Jessica Leonard.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, members of the council, city manager Bass and staff. Tonight, I am presenting the fiscal year 2026 city manager's proposed budget. This is the city's financial and spending plan for the year beginning October 1st, 2025. The outlines of our resources are allocated and sets the direction for the services we provide to our community. The proposed budget reflects conservative revenue projections, fully funds operating requirements, and maintain our undesignated reserve at or above the seventeen percent policy requirement, which is currently projected at forty-one percent of expenditures. I will walk you through revenue and expenditure trends, key budget considerations, and specific proposed allocations for fiscal year 2026, with comparisons to both the fiscal year 2025 amended budget and estimated actual so we can consider the year-over-year changes. His agenda for this presentation will begin with a review of revenue and expenditure trends to set the financial context for fiscal year 2026. Then we'll go over the major considerations that shape this budget, followed by the general fund and other funds budget overviews. Finally, I'll review the next step to the adoption process, including important dates for workshops and hearings. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund, covering public safety, public works, parks and recreation, planning, and economic development, and the general government functions. On the revenue side, the fiscal year 2026 proposed general fund budget is fifty point thirty-four million, which is one point twenty-nine million dollars less than the fiscal year 2025 amended budget of fifty-one point sixty-three million, and one point fifty-eight billion dollars less than the fiscal year 2025 estimated actual. This decrease is primarily the result of reduced transfers in, down from two point four million in fiscal year 2025 to one point one million in fiscal year 2026, along with the completion of several one-time capital projects funded in the prior year. Sales tax remains our single largest source of revenue, representing fifty-seven point six percent of the general fund. Fiscal year 2026 sales tax revenue is projected at twenty-eight point eighty-five million, compared to twenty-eight point eighty-three million in fiscal year 2025. This projection reflects stable but cautious growth expectations based on recent retail activity and economic trends. While sales tax collections have remained strong post pandemic, we are mindful of potential slowdowns in consumer spending and the impact of inflation. Our lowest to project are realistic levels to avoid overestimating revenues. On the expenditure side, the fiscal year 2026 proposed general fund budget is fifty-one point eighty-one million dollars, which is six point oh-two million dollars less than the fiscal year 2025 amended budget, or fifty-seven point eighty-three million, and one point ninety-seven million dollars less than the fiscal year 2025 estimated actual. This decrease is primarily the result of reduced transfers out, down from fourteen point seventeen million in fiscal year 2025 to seven point ninety-four million in fiscal year 2026, along with the completion of several one-time capital projects funded in the prior year. Departmental operating budgets remain relatively stable with adjustments for inflation, inflation, contractual increases, and personnel costs, but without new large-scale standard expansions. Personnel-related expenditures are the largest single category in our budget, accounting for roughly half of our total general fund spending. The fiscal year 2026 budget authorizes three hundred and thirty-two full-time positions and sixty-nine part-time or seasonal positions. It represents a net increase of two full-time positions and one permanent part-time position for the current year. These changes include one addition of code enforcement officer and safety and inspections, and staffing adjustments in parks and recreations, food services, converting one part-time position to full-time and adding another permanent part-time position. These adjustments are intended to address service delivery needs while remaining with sustainable staffing levels. We also added two full-time employees to the public health and development fund. Here you can see the trend in general fund salaries over recent years. For fiscal year 2026, we have included a two point five percent cost of living adjustment for all eligible employees effective October 1st, 2025. Fiscal year 2026 salaries are budgeted at eighteen point eight million, compared to eighteen point thirty-six million in the fiscal year 2026 amended budget, and roughly eighteen point thirty-eight million in the fiscal year 2025 estimated actual. This increase is driven by the cost of living adjustment, normal step increases, and the additional positions I just mentioned. We remain mindful that personnel costs are long-term commitment, and these adjustments are targeted rather than across-the-board expansions. Retirement expenditures continue to be one of our most significant fixed costs. Retirement contributions, particularly for police and fire, remain a major cost driver, with five million dollars budgeted for the police and fire pension fund loan. When combined with general employee pension contributions, pension costs represent approximately eleven point four percent of the general fund budget. This is an area we will continue to monitor closely. These percentages underscore the importance of ongoing financial planning for pension obligations as they represent a sustained cost pressure. The city's insurance costs are budgeted through our internal service funds, with the general fund transferring the necessary amounts. In fiscal year 2026, the general fund transferred five point twenty-three million dollars to cover liability, health, and workers' compensation insurance. This is a three percent increase over the fiscal year 2025 amended budget, driven by expected premium increases, claims experience, and modest adjustments for coverage enhancements. Of that total, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars is for liability insurance, four point zero four million dollars for health insurance, and three hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars for workers' compensation. Three major considerations shape this budget. First, the two point five percent cost of living adjustment for all employees to maintain competitiveness in a challenging labor market. Second, our commitment to maintaining an undesignated general fund balance at or above the seventeen percent policy level, which we currently exceed at forty-one percent. Area capital outlets, which are being targeted to priority needs such as vehicles, equipment, and facility improvements while avoiding overextension of resources. In summary, general fund revenues for fiscal year 2026 are fifty point thirty-four million, down one point twenty-nine million from the fiscal year 2025 amended budget, and one point fifty-eight million dollars from the fiscal year 2025 estimated actual. Expenditures are fifty-one point eighty-one million, down six point oh-two million from the fiscal year 2025 amended budget, and one point ninety-seven million dollars down from the fiscal year 2025 estimated actual. The largest revenue source is sales tax, while the largest expenditure category is personnel. The difference between revenues and expenditures will be covered by available fund balance whilst we'll maintain our reserve well above the required policy level. Here you see the dollar amounts for each revenue source in fiscal year 2026. Sales tax remains a dominant source at twenty-eight point eighty-five million, which is essentially flat compared to fiscal year 2025 estimated actuals, but slightly higher than the amended budget. Property taxes total four point twenty-six million, which is a two point seven percent decrease from the fiscal year 2025 amended budget. This is due to realistic collection adjustments and updated assessing values. Licenses and fees are projected at six point forty-nine million, a marginal decrease from fiscal year 2025, reflecting stable economic activity with no expectation of significant growth in business licenses. Charges for services increased slightly to three point forty-three million dollars, with growth due to garbage fee adjustments and parks and recreation programming revenue. Transfers in dropped significantly, or two point seven million in fiscal year 2025 to one point fourteen million in fiscal year 2026, due to the conclusion of certain one-time fund sources. This chart shows the composition of our general fund revenues. Taxes, thirty-seven point fifty-five million dollars, or seventy-four point three percent of the total. Licenses, fees, and fines, six point forty-nine million, or twelve point seven percent. Charges for services, three point forty-three million, or six point two percent. Other revenues, eight hundred five thousand dollars, or two point four percent. Internal governmental revenues, nine hundred seven thousand five hundred dollars, or one point nine percent. Transfers in, one point fourteen million, or two point five percent. These proportions remain consistent with historical patterns with only slight shifts year-over-year, primarily transfers, which are lower due to fewer one-time capital funding needs. Here's the general fund expenditures by function, now expressed in dollar terms. Police, nine point seventy-two million dollars, and the increase of about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from the fiscal year 2025 amended budget, primarily due to wage adjustments, retirement contributions, and operating supply increases. Fires, seven point forty-four million dollars, an increase of about one hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars, reflecting personnel costs and equipment needs. Public works, six point eighty-six million dollars, down about three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, driven by lower building maintenance capital expenses. Parks and recreation, five point fifty-five million dollars. It's up six hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for its larger front facility adjustments that we have made from building maintenance. Non-departmental, seven point forty-three million dollars. It's down seven hundred and sixty thousand three hundred dollars from fiscal year 2025 due to reduced transfers and one-time costs not repeated. Transfers out, seven point ninety-four million, down six point twenty-three million dollars, as major capital projects have concluded. Looking at expenditures by function, public safety continues to be our largest allocation, followed by public works, parks and recreation, and general government. In fiscal year 2026, public safety accounts for thirty-five percent of total general fund spending. Public works is thirteen percent, and parks and recreation is twelve percent. Non-departmental, outside agencies, and transfers together represent over a third of the budget, but this is down significantly from fiscal year 2025 because transfers out was dropped by more than six million dollars. Outside of the general fund, we manage it not for special revenue and internal service funds. The museum operations fund supports Anniston Museum of Natural History, the Bourbon Museum, and the Lonely Hotel for Gardens. While these facilities generate significant revenue from admissions, memberships, rentals, and donations, the city's general fund covers approximately fifty-five percent of operating costs. In fiscal year 2026, it sits at a total of eight hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is about forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars more than fiscal year 2025 amended, mainly due to personnel and maintenance costs. Internal service funds capture the city's cost for general liability, health, and workers' compensation insurance. The transfers total five point twenty-three million, which is a one hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollar increase from fiscal year 2025 amended budget. Liability insurance is eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Health insurance, four point oh-four million, and workers' compensation, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. These increases are tied to market premium, train, and claims experience. The stormwater funds revenues and expenditures are both budgeted at four hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars for fiscal year 2026, consistent with last year. These funds support the operation and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure citywide. The fire tax fund covers non-personnel costs for the fire department. Fiscal year 2026 revenues are one point fifty-six million dollars and expenditures are one point eighty-one million, with a difference funded by reserves for capital projects such as the appearance of displacement and facility needs. The fire training fund remains at one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one seventy-five for both revenues and expenditures, reflecting reimbursement from the Alabama Fire Department and participating school systems. This is a newly added fund for fiscal year 2026, created to separately account for activities, revenues, and expenditures related to publicing properties and operations. It is important to note that two full-time positions have been added under this fund for fiscal year 2026 to directly manage and maintain publicing properties. Gas tax fund supports eligible street and roadway projects. Fiscal year 2026 revenues and expenditures are budgeted at four hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars, an increase of one hundred and thirty thousand four hundred dollars from fiscal year 2025. Our capital outlay and housing improvement programs for fiscal year 2026 includes vehicles at one point eighty-eight billion dollars, machinery, equipment, two hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Projects at nine hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, including quintile landscaping, paving, stormwater projects, and outdoor grass matches. Airport improvement grants at one hundred and seventy-one thousand sixty-six dollars. Facility improvements at nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, including the aquatic and fitness center, museum age back, and technology upgrades totaling two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Our next steps in the budget process are August twentieth, budget work starting September second is our initial public hearing. September sixteenth is the budget adoption or second public hearing if changes are made. September twenty-seventh is the final deadline to adopt the budget. Once adopted, this budget becomes the city's financial guide for fiscal year 2026. That concludes the presentation of the fiscal year 2026 city manager's proposed budget.
Well, thank you, Ms. Leonard. We will have time for questions and comments at later meetings, but if you guys have any personal matters, we can go ahead and address, if you guys want to.
Well, yes, but I did not realize you were having a workshop tomorrow on the budget. I have a very critical doctor's appointment in Birmingham. What time could that be tomorrow? That's on you all. You decide what time, but you all can.
I'll come back today. So I did, I did want to bring this up really quick because I think it's important for you guys to have it on your mind. I did have a conversation with Ms. Leonard regarding potentially, I know it was recommended in the budget to do a COLA cost of living raise for employees. Initially, I discussed the potential of doing the COLA raise for employees and doing the STEP raise for public safety. After talking with Ms. Leonard, she felt like it would be more cost-effective, you know, with her statistical analysis, to do a STEP raise for all employees that will not include employees who have recently gotten a STEP raise or employees who are already in town health. And this will be a higher percentage than a COLA raise, about what, point seven percent? The reason why I initially addressed this specifically with public safety is because we have to maintain our competitive status with police and fire. You don't want a new hire coming in at the same pay as, you know, as someone who's been here for two or three years. And so in order for us to maintain our competitive status, that is why I initially recommended it. And with her expertise, came up with that different outlook instead of a COLA STEP raise.
Now, increase for those who qualify, what's the qualification when it comes to that?
When it comes to it on COLA, everyone would get it, because the entire scale goes up.
With STEP raises, everyone wouldn't, because if you've already been promoted recently or if you are completely tapped out, I mean, you make the highest on the scale, there's no more money for you to get. But with a STEP raise, it means those who are eligible for it are getting paid more, and new hires are not coming in at the same pay that our current employees are making. Which is why it makes it more cost-effective, because you're not putting out more money for every single employee.
So your representation is three point two of rolls for everyone?
That's correct. It's about three point one five percent.
And what term does recent, a recent raise, if you compare you?
Within the last month or so, or?
This fiscal year.
So if you got a raise in fiscal year 25, you're not eligible for a full four, what's it when you get?
You're not eligible for it.
Not eligible for anything?
If you received a STEP raise this fiscal year, you would receive another STEP raise for the next fiscal year.
So which employee, so how many employees are eligible and ineligible?
Ineligible, I want to say it's around, I know at least twenty are tapped out, I believe, or tapped out, and I think it's there with you.
You know how many, how many employees have gotten STEP raises this year?
I can't pinpoint, but I do have around five or more.
So the others, other than the rolls who were tapped out and those who already received the raise for this year, the remainder of the board would be at three point one percent.
Correct.
Seriously. I know we have to do something, but we're going to upset people either way, I guess. One of my biggest concerns, and I'm definitely, I'm definitely on board with public safety, but when we look at, when we look at our, our, um, our pay scale across the board, since we've been out there a lot, really our pay scale across the board, we shouldn't be keeping anybody in house. I mean, we're paying, the city of Anniston, regardless of what people are putting in there to the big experience. The city of Anniston, not really paying that well. We complain about public works a lot, complain a lot. But how many of us would be asking for like two hundred dollars bigger than that? Cut it grass. And then, and then it was, and I guess, I don't know what the solution is, but just across the board, and I guess that would be kind of hard if somebody had a promotion last year for a man. Mr. Wallace, look at that. They go over that, and play a little bit.
Oh, they say thirteen something.
Thirteen.
I understand it's a difficult decision, but I think that it is something that we are going to have to heavily consider across the board. And if you're tapped out, you can't get any more money. You would be completely off the pay scale. And majority of the people who are tapped out, are they higher level? So majority of them are probably directors.
So in our system, does, if they're tapped out, they would be on the COLA high line?
You can get a COLA, but you cannot get a STEP raise.
Yeah, I get that. I understand that. Because it's, that's one of those, you have to, so they exist with some kids.
So you're saying, so we actually, say for instance, a employee that comes in tomorrow, how much do they have?
They would get the base pay. They wouldn't, they wouldn't come in, if the base pay is fifteen fifty, not saying that that's what it is, but we give these employees that are existing a STEP raise, and their STEP raise is three point one something percent higher. New hires would come in at the base pay. They wouldn't come in already a STEP up. That would defeat the purpose of doing STEP raises.
But what I'm asking is, what is, what is the basic pay for employees that need, um, say tomorrow? What would you say?
What, um, position it depends on?
Let's say they're working in public works.
If they come in, um, as public work, street department is going to be thirteen.
Your whole hair was. Minimum wage would add something, actually minimum wage.
Seven, seven twenty-five.
Minimum wage should be thirty dollars.
How did you?
You got me shut up for a sign loss.
I'm saying to you, is that, is the cost of living today? You can't live down the road, you would give off thirteen, depending on, if you got a few eggs, and pigs up your chin.
Yeah, I think I've done it before, because at thirteen dollars an hour, I mean, I'm just using public works. I've been on public works a lot, you know, we'll cut grass, you know, we'll get grass cut, and there'll be crap everywhere. Okay. But a lot of times, we get what we pay for. We don't go to a convenience store and buy candy. I get that. But yeah, I, I'm, I'm a joke, I don't know about thirty dollars. Don't know about thirty dollars an hour, because they ain't going to be able to keep up, um, two of these chickens, but I'm gonna figure it out. We have a lot of the entire thing, don't they got to? But no, seriously, it's. Let's look this, I guess, I hear that doesn't fix the digestive as far as. Because, because, let me ask a question. So our, our temporary employees or under forty-hour employees are not eligible for, would not be eligible for this, either way.
No, it's un, wait, yes.
Temporary.
It'll be for hours, hours, hours.
For, for cost of living.
And it's, yeah.
But that didn't happen.
That's what I had calculated this time.
Okay, because I.
The only one you probably want is your summer hires to enter or life.
Really, I, I got beat up, that, that, that just like a lot. Okay.
Now, I'm being distressed right now. But in this country, we've been wrong for far too long. And people can't live off, a person says they worked in a factory. If they can't afford the items they're making, there's a problem out there. They shouldn't be able to afford, just say they were making a radio. They should be able to afford that radio. If they can't afford that radio, there's a problem down in the land sometimes. And that's supposed to be happening in this country for far too long. We want people to work, but we don't want to pay them. You got to pay the people to work. Now, that, that's not to say if you pay them, I'm gonna tell them they don't work. But for the most part, if you pay people, then they will work.
So we're, then we got, we have time.
We do, we, we have.
We have time, we have time.
We got, but it's something y'all can just, we don't have to vote on it this evening. One last question about the PNF fund. I know that we're paying an additional lump sum amount. When is the last payment for that? When is the last payment for that, like, is it like, how much money are we paying in addition to what we should do?
I just asked this at our last meeting, so I think we're paying like nine hundred thousand.
So how many more years of-
Two, we should be done since September twenty twenty-seven.
Good, so then we'll go again, we save that much money and put it towards?
I, that's what they say we're saving, but the cost is going up every year, even though I'm paying that, now I'm paying more into the fund every year, so it's-
We'll worry about that, we're at the cost in. Okay, I, um, we'll continue some of the budget conversations in the coming days. We'll move on to item two, reimbursement to city officials. Just a couple, thank you, Ms. Leonard, sorry. A couple reimbursement, um, or housekeeping items, the first item is a reimbursement to Chief Bowles. He attended the Alabama Association of Chief of Police Summer Conference in Gulf Shores, as well as a reimbursement to Carla Eden while attending an economic development training seminar in Auburn. Are there any questions regarding that? All right, we do have some bids, um, item A is a purchase of eight police utility vehicles, and this is in the capital budget, right? So part of C I B, okay. And then, item B, which I know you guys will definitely want to talk about, as you all know, um, our, um, contract with, um-
Republic.
Republic Services ends the end of September, the end of this fiscal year. And so we had to put out bids on July twenty-third, in your packets, you will see the bids, um, the companies that bidded on several items. With that being said, one twenty-one disposal is being recommended to the council to accept their bid. Are they here?
Yes.
We do have a representative for one twenty-one disposal, if you guys have any questions regarding that bid. This is something we are most likely gonna have to have a, um, a call, a special call meeting on, because we do kinda have to get the ball rolling on this as Republic is gonna go out by the end of September. So do you guys have any questions or concerns regarding that bid? Now, there is an increase. Let me go to-
Yeah. It's not gonna affect you, it won't hurt you.
I have paper, so it doesn't have numbers on mine. So let's, let me explain this to you all, uh, quickly, one twenty-one disposal, their base bid per month is sixteen dollars and sixty cents for the trash can. To include, um, curbside pickup for household items, it would be an additional nine dollars and thirty-two cents. We have two options, um, there is a preference for one of those options, but that option will be around twenty-five, a little over twenty-five dollars, and that is if the city continues to bill it. There are some cons with the city continuing to bill it, which is why it was originally not recommended to do so. Um, or, we can go to alternative number four, correct, Mr. Armenta? Which the can will be nineteen dollars and eighteen cents, and if that includes curbside pickup, that's an additional nine dollars, so it's gonna be roughly around twenty-eight something dollars. Um, we've had a few discussions with guys, Ms. Leonard, Armenta, and the representative from one twenty-one disposal about the city kinda doing this in phases, so there's not such a strong financial burden on citizens. Um, potentially taking some of the cost off of the citizens in the city. So I believe you suggested that the citizens pay around twenty-five, and the city will bear a little over three dollars of the cost to ensure, um, that we can do weekly curbside pickup. So what this will include, um, is, it, just like you get your trash picked up one day out of the week, you'll get your household items picked up one day out of the week. Now, there are parameters around that particular issue, um, but I think it is far more, um, convenient for citizens and it's something that they have been asking for quite some time. This will also allow public works to spend a critical amount of time in addressing some of these hotspots and areas where people are legally don't need to. We also have representatives, if there is anything that you guys would like to say regarding this matter. Again, this is something that we are going to have to likely have a special call meeting on, uh, because time is of the essence in moving forward, accepting this bid. And whatever alternative way that you all recommend.
So, prove, prove it, explain, explain, explain these numbers to me again. I see the book, the base bid is sixteen ninety, six sixty, plus ten dollars each additional can.
Right. So this is if the city continues to bill. Am I heard going, tell you guys?
So, so Mayor, what, what you're seeing is, we actually put this bid out in several alternates, right? One of those alternates was the company twenty, or one twenty-one, or whoever bid out to take on that billing responsibility, that would free up finances home, public works' home. It, it was just a natural progression into that next contract. We didn't do it three years ago when we contracted, we bid it out first. So that's why that first number doesn't have that billing component in it. So the first number, uh, the, the actual cart pickup, that's with us continuing to bill, which obviously the city, the city is not, not, um, not recommending to the council, or the base, billing, which is a little further down. But, um, so you have the can, the original can, the, the ninety-two gallon can, ninety-six gallon can, that you already have. So that's your first number. Your second number, the ten dollars, is those that have two, three, four cans. Republic was with us for so long that folks had an abundance of blue cans. So Republic was taking a lot of cost because they weren't charging for that additional can. All of those will come up, the new vendor will put their cart down, they will have to contract with the new vendor to get that additional can. Again, nothing from the city, that, that's all the vendor. The curbside pickup is that next number, that nine dollars and fifty-two cents or so, whatever. We had some recycling issues on there, but we think we're doing a really good job with what we're doing as far as the, um, cardboard pickup, um, not passing that along to our citizens, right? We're, we're taking that, that, that's something that public works does, not an additional charge. Further down, I'll show, was it a dollar or something for billing, dollar sixty something per can? And that's where you come up with the nineteen dollars per ninety-six gallon can. What I'd like to do is pause, and I'd like these two gentlemen to introduce themselves, they, they came a long way, so I at least want you, I at least want you to hear their voice for a second.
I appreciate it, um, my name is Nicholas Lawford, um, I'm in all the residential and commercial services at one twenty-one disposal. Container, uh, public has me run operations for the residential side. Came from All Round in Beverly, where we're headquartered, uh, one twenty-one disposal. Barely new company, if you will, we started our, uh, services in October twenty nineteen with one truck and, um, three roll-off containers. So here we are today with a little, little less than a hundred trucks, uh, we service around about forty thousand residential containers. Um, we run fifteen or so, uh, commercial frontload container, you know, trucks that, uh, some cans are on the top of the truck, and then, uh, probably thirty-five or forty roll-off trucks as well. Everything that you see from us is in-house, uh, we have an office in Auburn, office in Roanoke, Alabama, office in Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, soon, very soon, we'll have one in Huntsville, Alabama as well. All the calls, all the drivers, everything, come out of one of those cars. So we don't have anything outside of that, everything is filtered there, in-house, and, you know, we just feel that it drives for community, I guess, if you will, but also the ability to touch every problem, um, or issue that comes up that we see that we can address. Spent a lot of time on education, we feel like, is something that, you know, we try to do in this industry is, hey, my trash didn't get picked up, we tried to take it a step further, why didn't it get picked up? There's an issue, did I make a mistake? If I did, a hundred percent I'll own it, we'll address it with the driver, my drivers come in every day, and we go over anything, um, that, you know, may have happened out there on the road, we missed this can, hey, why did we miss it? All of our trucks are equipped with a four-facing camera and a typical point camera on it that, uh, so it's a side load vehicle, we'll be on the side of the truck, it's a rear load vehicle, we'll be on the rear of the truck. We look at those videos, share them with you guys, share them with our drivers, share them with the customers, um, so we can see exactly what's going on. If it's something where, hey, my trash didn't miss multiple weeks, something's going on, right? You're not just, I promise you, we're not just driving about a can because we want to. Um, is the can too close to the mailbox, is, you know, this car blocking or whatever? So we just feel like education on the front end will help the consistency long-term. You know, we'd be extremely pleased, extremely excited, extremely grateful, um, for you guys, for us, in the service of the city. You know, we feel it's right in our wheelhouse, and, um, certainly we look forward to it. We plan to service it, uh, with side load vehicles. We understand, you know, for safety, that's, that's, we have way too many people on phones these days, running into the back of those vehicles with guys standing on that step. At the end of the day, we told all of our guys, hey, look, our goal is to get you here and get you home to your families. So we feel that side load vehicles are the safest option to do that. We understand that not all roads and alleyways are conducive to that big vehicle. That reason, we do utilize some smaller non-CBL vehicles, smaller rear load vehicles in general, to ensure that we can service those types of customers and cans, you know, on time and demand. Other than that, I don't think, go ahead.
And B, is, we're recommending that the billing go to the vendor. We don't, public works specifically doesn't want the council to think that, oh, well, we're not, we're not handling the citizens anymore, it's them, we're just gonna pass it along, pass it along. Our citizens will still be able to call us, we'll still be able to interact with them. This is still a team effort, all the way around. So when we do say stuff like the vendor's going to bill, the vendor's gonna help, you know, handle complaints, we're still going. We're, we're not going to just pass that off. We still answer to our citizens and will continue to answer to our citizens.
What, what's, what's your nearest values or?
All right, here, uh, probably our nearest, for the year, would probably be Roanoke, Randolph County, service all the time.
What's your nearest nearest value?
Phoenix City, a little under fifteen thousand cans a week.
How many cans, how many cans would we have here?
Well, we're anticipating, uh, there's about fifty-one hundred active. We understand that there's probably seventeen hundred of them that are currently getting picked up, but they're not paying. Um, so we're full of dough, we anticipate it probably around eighty-five hundred, once we grow this thing out, I mean, just when some of these customers come in, some of these people that have had multiple carts, that have to pay them, continue to hold multiple carts, but we bid the number of fifty-one hundred.
And that would be serviced out of here too, so we, we're not running trucks from Roanoke every day, they're gonna be here.
So you say, we want the citizens to pay twenty-five, but actually the cost will be about twenty-eight dollars?
Well, that is only if they bill. Um, if, if they bill, which is what's recommended by staff, then the cost will be, I don't know if it's that number, over twenty-eight dollars. And so the recommendation is that citizens pay twenty-five dollars and we handle the costs, the, the leftover costs.
Okay. We're making up that cost and not billing, denying all the billing inside ourselves, is that correct? Is that correct, or?
No.
Obviously, no, I think, not that, no.
It still doesn't make the, it's almost like we're just trying to split the cost of the increase between the citizens.
What's that cost, so?
What, see?
What's that cost, that's, that's-
The contract, it's like-
Fifty-one hundred, fifty-one hundred, cans going with the odds of fifteen thousand dollars.
You told us that it would be a new thing?
The, the cost is in the city's regard.
If we do the twenty-five dollar thing, it'd be three hundred and some dollars, maybe?
Uh, uh, can I, okay, so can I play devil's advocate right here, I hate that term, I repeat that, but, um, what, in the scenario that we continue to bill and the citizens pay the full, the base bid will be sixteen sixty plus the additional nine thirty-two, so a little over twenty-five dollars. The citizens are responsible for paying that, we develop a better method with one twenty-one disposal on it, people are not paying, but they're still getting, I don't know what that method would be, ensuring that their trash is not getting picked up, because if you don't pay, you don't, unless you qualify for, uh, what is it, the social period exemption? Would that in any way, maybe not the actual work of it all, but would that save us any, any financial backing instead of paying the additional almost four dollars?
I'm not sure, is it an additional four? Just like you have?
Three, three hundred dollars.
How do you? We'd never have seen it without just, without a, a, a-
Because we would, yeah, we would continue billing, we wouldn't have to write the cost, but we would be able to provide better services. So I'm thinking, could that be an alternative route that we go? Would it be more cost effective, would it be?
I can tell you that, yeah, if you went down that path, for us, it's very easy, and we do it for Phoenix City every month, right? They collect theirs the same way. Typically, the first week, end of the first week, um, they will send us a list and say, hey, these people are suspended. It's a click of the button for us to turn all of those people off, as the driver's going down the road, if people get an alert on his tablet, says his customer's currently suspended, he will leave that can there. They typically give their citizens two weeks to pay, if they don't, they ask us to go collect the can. Um, they even use, they've had such a good success rate, I'm happy to share any, you know, any, by any phone number or whatever that people have told them, but they've got a good enough success rate with theirs, only collecting garbage, and they use us for water as well. So if people aren't paying their water, they turn their garbage off, because they don't have a great way of cutting the water off on these people down there, for whatever reason. Uh, and they cut their garbage off, you get their water bill as well. I will say as well, that Phoenix City also bidded at like, they're bidding for thirteen thousand five hundred, because they had a similar scenario that you guys have with Republic, where they had waste management for twenty years, and so everybody collected all these extra trash cans. Well, when we came in and swapped out the cans, we're now at fifteen thousand cans altogether, because everybody's calling in and signing up for that second, that third can that they've had for all these years, which is additional revenue that the city wasn't realizing before.
And, and I think one of the breakdowns that, that Ms. Leonard and I have had as far as management of Republic is, is that there were so many cans out. And to, to, to look at the pay list and go, okay, they're suspended. I, I'm not sure that Republic had the ability to flip the switch. Is that we would continue to get garbage and continue to get garbage until we put out a thousand delinquent notices, and then they pull them off at one time? And I think each and every one of you citizens at this table has got a call, oh, my trash didn't get pulled.
So essentially, I'm sorry, I repeat, essentially, the issue that we've been hiding is, we had really no real way to address people who were not paying their trash bill, but we were footing the bill. So we were losing money. In this way, if, if we, if, if this happens this way, if we notify them in time, hey, so-and-so individual is not paying their trash bill, we're not responsible for paying that bill after a certain amount of time, or we continue to pay their bill once they're all suspended?
We don't, so we bill Phoenix City, um, a month in advance, so, uh, and then, yeah, they suspend them. Typically, we just apply credit back to their account for the customer, right? So we've already billed them, or they turn them off, and, you know, we're not picking up the garbage, so you're not paying for it, turn it back.
But where Republic was dealing with years and years and years, they're starting out at net zero. So that resets everything forever back.
Right, I think that would be the good thing, the only concern I still have is, we have a manual process on our side. It is various parts that keep cutting those off and turning them back on.
Okay, so do you all have an automated program that you have to work through with the city that we could, kind of, do? Reason I say that, because, because we're, basically, we're taking something about, we're taking this process off time, but it's a manual process we're doing now. And I guarantee the manual process is why we're at this stage. Now, nothing against the-
Which we do cut them off, but, but we can't keep up.
They can't keep up, because-
It's an Excel spreadsheet we're calling this, is there?
Yeah, it's a manual.
But, I mean, we haven't invented that bill with Republic, we haven't, I mean, we haven't go through four meetings
just to get to the Excel spreadsheet that we could share. So I think the process here, going back to, again, net zero, is we're building from a foundation that I think, I, I think we could, we could build from, if y'all would jump. So I think the process here going back to, again, net zero, is we're building from a foundation that I think, I, I think we could, we could build from if y'all would check.
So basically, uh, it's probably from a, I guess, like a logistics standpoint, it's better built with one twenty-one billing upfront.
That's what I would mean from the basis, but with cost factor, it would save us like a hundred thousand.
Is, but it also costs us, I thought you just said it costs us about three hundred thousand.
The contract would, if we billed out.
So what's the mix say, a hundred or a hundred?
It'll probably, if we take billing back, it'll be one hundred dollars less, I mean, one hundred thousand less.
But we're also not factoring in the fact that Public Works is going to have less housing served, right? We're going to be concentrating on our dog areas and things like that as soon as they get into their rhythm. And I think we're gonna have a reduced amount of dog sites. So I think we're going to have the ability to service our citizens from our standpoint with them.
Seen what we're having? Have you seen what we're having? When we, we tell people we don't have trash cans, when they put it down on the, when you take trash cans?
Yes.
It all goes over there across the whole, it all, rather than you see. I, I think it will happen, I think, I think Public Works, where you're, where you're, where you will be reduced, there will be an increase in dump sites. I don't see any increase, I see a decrease in the regular sites we have now, but Joe's gonna have somebody in his neighborhood who can afford to pay, they don't come down on that by himself.
Well, one of the things I'm happy about with this is that on a weekly basis compared to once a month, is that they come by, pick up our, so I, where it's not, it's, it's, once a month, they come by, actually, I don't know.
We gotta be careful saying what, what is, you know, what people are going to do. We have to be very clear with our language, it's illegal to dump in the city. And we're gonna have to develop, and this has nothing to do with you all, by the way, I'm sorry. Um, but we're gonna have to start putting up a mechanism in place to address this illegal dumping. So, you know, we're, we're putting in a situation where we're trying to make it more feasible and convenient for, you know, citizens to have that weekly household, you know, trash or household, uh, bulk item pickup. We just have to be very careful with saying, oh, you can't afford it, just, you know, they're just gonna go throw it out. You shouldn't throw it out, it's absolutely legal to do so. We have about sev- we have about seven minutes. Uh, we wanna thank you all for coming, we'll be with you soon, and possibly have a special call meeting to address it too.
Yeah, let's, pardon, go second.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Arnett. We will go ahead and move forward with item number four, policy and procedures, establishing employee appreciation recognition program. That is also in our consent agenda, any questions or concerns? Nuisance properties, group two thousand twenty-five dash O two, grass debris, vehicles and burnt structures. And alcohol license, we will have a public hearing on this. Uh, this is for a restaurant, we sell liquor license for Demage Incorporated, doing business as Amore, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, located at either one Noble Street, Suite eleven hundred.
Where's that? I didn't want to, rooftop, that's why I'm thinking.
Oh, yeah, it's, they, yeah, up the, yeah.
PNC building, moral, PNC building. Item number seven are donations, there is a resolution, a standalone resolution to treat the Good Choices Program donations for its miniature. In your pocket, um, there are also itemized donation lists. Any questions or concerns? Item B is authorizing expenditure donated funds for West Anderson Reunion. This is coming from donated funds from Representative Barbara Boyd, this is her request to give, um, a donation to the West Anderson Reunion. Alright, item A, we have two budget amendments, uh, well, yeah, two budget amendments. Amen, the first one is amend FY twenty-five budget to reflect a grant within Anstom Museum of Natural History Fund. This is also a standalone resolution that we will be voting on tonight. And the second item is amending the twenty twenty-five capital budget for various projects using allocated contingency funds. Any questions or concerns about those two items? Alright, item number nine, Councilmember Downey, quote for installation of street light on Birch Street.
Birch Street's door, um, I asked short enough, the cost of installing and maintaining a street light on Birch Street, it's a cost of about eight bucks a mile. Seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, is that right?
Seven, am I reading, you said eight dollars a mile?
Uh, seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. This is what the contract amount for, through, out of power did. But because it's a, it's a repeated expenditure, the council has to prove.
Okay, any questions for the starters regarding alcohol, the human facts on that matter? Are you guys willing to bring that up at the next council meeting? Or do you want to bring it up in the next board session for continuing the discussion?
Oh, no, 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 we, I don't, we're, we're, just going to do that for a while.
Well, I will ask that we hold off on today, just because I have a couple of questions regarding our master agreement. So if this is something, just to get a couple of my questions asked, that you are willing to address at the next council meeting? Or unless there is a huge preference to do it in time?
I mean, we're gonna hold another, seven, seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, I know we wanna do a, like a citywide lights, but, yeah.
I guess, so, and see, and I apologize for my professionalism, my face that I just made, but it, it would be made, it had been made to be that it would be a greater cost of living. And right now, we're talking seven dollars a mile, we're only talking ninety-four dollars a year. We're talking ninety-four dollars a year for a street, for something that's a piece of safety for our citizens, but that cost was made out to be a little bit more than what it was the last time. When I asked about it prior, I was given the first one, the greater cost of that, so, I'm, I'm, yeah.
I'm all about doing, uh, doing like a citywide lighting service, I mean, I think that we, I think there, there are areas, I would say there, there are areas where we're not as efficient as we need to be, um.
There are two other areas on the west side, which is why I was asking if we could hold off and group them together, but I had a couple of questions without the power to say it. That's the only reason why.
There's, yeah, there's more official way that you said to do it, um.
I mean, we can vote on it if majority wants to tonight, I just had two additional areas that were brought up, and I just wanted to make sure. Alright, any other questions or concerns? City manager updates?
Um, Mayor, there are no updates. I've updated Councilor Harris regarding her request for a traffic study, once I have that cost, I will send that to, um, this Harris to us, or to the council. And just to follow up on the budget, Mr. Downey asked a question regarding who had been topped out and who was not. Would council like to see that list, so you all know who, which employees are topped out and would be included, which employees will be included in that separate.
Well, can you not send that to me? I, I don't, I don't wanna base that off, I don't wanna know the individuals who don't have it.
We could, can, can, can we, can we get out?
It doesn't necessarily have to be by name, just to base off of that.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, not, not should name, just about possession of. Or even, even if you wanted to just say in part form, how many?
But that's a lot.
What is, the other figure, we did tell about the budget, uh, she says, says she has to open tomorrow, the government sort of, kind of, budget, if you want me to?
So we are gonna have to have a budget workshop, but you're giving me on that, I know that that has to be advertised if we have a forum, so we'll consider that. It's not, you all, she nails her, like, workshop after this, isn't it? Here he goes and stuff like that, that's, that's not a show.
Okay. My call's at two o'clock, I have no idea how long it's gonna take.
I'll.
You can, you can have that.
Okay.
If I can't find it back, you can have that.
Okay. Okay, I'll be with me spouse before we leave today.
Okay, I forget that, one o'clock, I appreciate, uh.
We do. And we will have to advertise this too, and I don't know if we're in the time frame to do so. Yeah, so where, how do we want?
Have a budget workshop, so, so the government here can't believe that.
So we don't need to?
I don't believe so, we have a budget.
Okay, alright, one last thing, uh, to let you all know, I will be, um, add, amending the budget for you all to go on, just to add the main street board to the consent agenda. But that being said, we're dismissed and it's five minutes, so we'll head straight into the council meeting.